Good evening. I'd like to call the water. Public School Board meeting, September 8th, 2020. Mrs. Burns, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Parentano.
Present.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mrs. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Boyle.
Here.
Mrs. Hollenbach.
Present.
Mr. Kovitz.
Here.
Mr. Marington.
Here.
Mr. Cirillo.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. The Board met an executive session prior to the meeting to discuss matters of employment, issues related to labor relations in the purchase or lease of real property, matters related to litigation, and matters related to school safety and security. Mrs. Burns, do you have any announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Dr. McGee, Superintendent's Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Parentano. On the Superintendent's Report, you'll see September's enrollment report. Not much different between September and August, with the exception, we have about a 30-student decrease in overall enrollment. That number is not exceptional in any way. Today, on September 8th, we began our first day of school, and in six of our buildings, just over 200 special needs students returned to the hallways and classrooms of Nishamani School District, first time in six months. It was good to see them. They were all smiles and seemed to have a good day, and their staff liked to thank them for stepping up for the special group of children. In additionally, the rest of the students in the district had their first day of Zoom school. And all accounts, as we walked around the district, was there was incredible enrollment or attendance, I should say, to the tune of only a couple kids here and there being missing from each class. So, other than some minor human errors of myself, of teachers, of parents, and students, it seemed to be a successful day, and we will try a similar day on Friday throughout the month of September. Beginning next week, we begin our student orientation days on Monday, kindergarten, grade five and grade nine, come in in half grades, and then on Tuesday, the second half of the grade comes in so they can get acclimated to this new school environment. We picked that up with additional grades later on in the week as well, and continue that through the following week. So, as we learn online in September, we are preparing to bring kids back to school in the hybrid model in September, in the red-blue model. Speaking of that model, I believe we are very close to it. Staff looks good as far as the Nishamani staff. We are still missing some new staff, additional staff that we need that we will problem-solve and troubleshoot over the next couple of weeks. We are very close on materials. Still some things being shipped and not on hand yet, but we're very close on that. So, I would say we are on track for at least a good decision about that at the end of the month. Thank you, Mr. Parentano.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. This will bring us to our first session of public comment. Mrs. Burns, do we have any signups?
No signups.
There are no signups. Does anybody wish to approach the podium and speak? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the agenda. Mr. Allen, could you please read number 201, please?
Thank you, Mr. Parentano. Resolutions 2.01 Administrative Leave of Absence. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following leave of absence for administrative staff. That is the principal that's requesting middle school. And 2.02 Administrative Appointments. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments for certified staff, and that will be an acting principal position. That is also a requesting, correct?
Thank you, Mr. Allen. The motion's been made for 2.01 and 2.02. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Acceptance? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero.
Mr. Parentano, if I may interrupt for a second while we wish Mrs. Hollen a speedy recovery. Mr. Hunt has joined us tonight, and I want to thank him for stepping up and filling the void. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, sir. Good to see you. Mr. Sullivan, please.
I'd like to make a master motion to approve item 2.03 Certified Retirements, Resignations, and End of Assignments. 2.04 Certified Leaves of Absence. And 2.05 Certified Revised Leaves of Absence.
Thank you. A motion's been made for 2.03, 2.04, 2.05. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bowman. Any comments, questions, or concerns on these items? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Hollenbach.
I'd like to make a motion for 2.06 Support Retirements, Resignations, and End of Assignments. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following retirements, resignations of support staff, and there are nine people listed on the list.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenbach. Motion's been made for 2.06. May I have a second? Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Just like to take note that one of our employees from the support staff has been with us 23 years, and we want to thank them for their service here with Nishamani. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Boyle, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 2.07 Certified Appointments. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments for certified staff, and there are eight names listed.
Thank you. A motion's been made by 2.07. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cirillo. Comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Boyle, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 2.08 Incillary Appointments. Are resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following incillary appointments for certified staff teaching a sixth period as noted in the collective bargaining agreement.
And the list includes 27 names.
Twenty-seven.
Thank you. Motion's been made for 2.08. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bowman. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Hollenbach, please.
I'd like to make a motion for 2.09 Support Leaves of Absence. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following leaves of absence of support staff, and there are 20 names listed.
Thank you. A motion's been made for 2.09. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bowman. Comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Cirillo, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 2.10 Support Revised Return from Leave. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following revised return from leave of absence for support staff. There was one name listed.
Thank you. Motion's been made for 2.10. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Marington, please.
I'd like to make a motion to pass 2.11 Support Appointments. Resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments for support staff, and there are 23 names.
Thank you, Mr. Marington. Motion's been made on 2.11. May I have a second? Second by Mrs. Boyle. Any comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Before we move on to 2.12, I just want to ask Dr. McGee if he could just apply some commentary for the public on why, at this time, our employment situation required so many motions we usually don't have at the beginning of the school year.
Sure. Traditionally, the Board approves employment prior to a person taking their job in the district. So, in our present state, we have people taking leave in short notice for good reason, and waiting a month or weeks for us to find, to replace them for board action puts students without people in front of them or servicing them. So, we collectively decided that it's best to have an action meeting now to be able to make sure we have staff in front of students or with students to support them ASAP instead of waiting until the end of the month as we traditionally do.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. We're going to move on to 2.12. 2015 GISA Amendment 5 Indoor Air Quality, All Schools Excluding Towanka Elementary. Whereas, the Nishamani School Board of Directors desires to move forward with additional scope items of the Guaranteed Energy Savings Project as it relates to the installation of indoor air quality improvements using bipolar ionization and/or ultraviolet germicidal irradiation at the Nishamani School District High School, Middle School, and Elementary Schools covered by the 2015 Guaranteed Energy Savings Act Agreement Amendment 5. And whereas, the Nishamani School Board of School Directors approved the appointment of Reynolds Energy Services, Inc. for the 2015 GISA Agreement along with four subsequent amendments adding additional scopes of work to the Guaranteed Energy Savings Project throughout the district. And whereas, the Nishamani Board of School Directors approves Reynolds Energy Services, Inc. to provide all necessary services including construction upgrades related to the installation of energy-efficient indoor air quality improvements utilizing bipolar ionization and/or ultraviolet germicidal irradiation at the Nishamani School District High School, Middle School, and Elementary Schools covered by the 2015 Guaranteed Energy Savings Agreement. And whereas, this Amendment 5 scope addition to the overall GISA work will be provided as recommended in the presentation to the full Board at its public meeting on July 28th, 2020, therefore now be it resolved that the Nishamani School Board of Directors accepts the amended proposal from Reynolds Energy Services, Inc. for Amendment Number 5 and the lump sum of $1,814,369 and the revised contract sum of $42,701,709 with additional scope items for Amendment Number 5 relative to the installation of indoor air quality improvements utilizing bipolar ionization and/or ultraviolet germicidal irradiation at the Nishamani School District High School, Middle Schools, and Elementary Schools covered by the 2015 Guaranteed Energy Savings Agreement and defined as energy savings guaranteed under PA Act 39, 57, and 77 Guidelines. Be it further resolved that the President, Vice President, Secretary, Treasurer, Solicitor, and Administration of the School District are hereby authorized and directed on behalf of the School District and under its corporate seal to execute the contract as approved by the Solicitor and Administration and such other documents and affidavits to take such further action as may be required by law and necessary or desirable to effectuate the aforementioned GISA Amendment 5 for the Nishamani School District High School, Middle Schools, and Elementary Schools covered by the 2015 Guaranteed Energy Savings Act Agreement. A motion's been made. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by, is that you, Mr. Kovitz? Mr. Kovitz. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
I had a comment to add to that.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions that had come up while we discussed this last. I wanted to just highlight or point out that the GISA contract that those buildings were improved upon was taken out and held by Reynolds Engineering. In order to get this work done as a part of the Guaranteed Energy Savings Act, it somewhat behooves us to, for Reynolds, to be involved in specing the equipment since they're on the hook to say for the guaranteed savings that they, you know, it's all part of their calculation. So, if we're changing equipment up on them, you know, that's, hopefully, that kind of clears up. Some questions as to why we didn't go other ways with this, that's one of the main reasons. Okay, that's it.
At this time, I'd like to have Mr. Spar from Reynolds approach the podium to answer
Mr. Spar, one of the questions I didn't ask when we did the presentation in July, and Mr. Allen just alluded to, is all our GISA buildings has equipment installed through your GISA project, which is guaranteed, and we are now adapting or updating the said same equipment with these additional features to provide this microbial remediation. How is that going to affect the efficiency of the system, and are you still mandated by the Act that these systems are audited and have to be maintained in order to achieve the energy specifications and the performance that is in your contract?
The answer is yes. We are mandated by our contract that we still must maintain the performance that was provided in the earlier base and amended agreements for all of those buildings. And there's something in the agreement called a material change, and that material change can be a difference in use of the building or a change in equipment, as Mr. Allen pointed out. And that change of equipment, because it's being done by us, effectively extends that guarantee of the performance of the buildings. And so, what Mr. Allen stated is correct, and we are mandated to do that under our agreement.
In addition, at the particular time, we had had some questions about the availability of the bipolar ionization devices and the amount of time it would take to have them shipped to us and the installation schedule that would be involved in getting that work performed on an expedited schedule. Can you expand on that a little bit, please?
Currently, we're expecting to work in the evenings. As people are in the buildings now, we need to shut units down and start them back up. We have worked with Atmos Air so that they are really ready to go on the back end of this with all the equipment selected so that they can move quickly. As soon as that equipment is here, it will be installed in buildings. We'll do priority with Dr. McGee and the administration and make sure if there's a priority to buildings that we do that, and we will finish all this up. Really, we're in September. We'll get the equipment, and we'll finish all that up before the end of the calendar year.
Thank you. Is there any questions from any other Board members?
I have one question. I just thought of, I didn't think of this before. I believe there's been a change in your company, or a new name or something along that lines. Is there a successor clause that whatever contracts were under, the old succeeds into the new?
Yes, there's an assignment clause.
Okay.
While we have been operating under and continue to be Reynolds in the Nishamani contracts and as we sit here, we are a company called Site Logic that has not been assigned in your contracts yet. So, for all of the work that we're doing, we're continuing to do that as Reynolds. When there is an opportunity for that to be assigned to, you know, something like Site Logic doing business as Reynolds Energy Services or however that goes, the first thing that we'll do is we'll reach out to Council and either Ms. Weider or Mr. Torrentay have that discussion with them, make sure that that lines up with the language that's in our agreement that allows you to do that and us to ask for that, and we'll make that change, which we will ultimately have to do because we have that long guarantee, not necessarily that it will have to be done as a result to take care of this work. None of that will be in the way of what we have to do.
Thank you. Just continuing, I just want to comment that this project, I feel, is very important to the district. It gives us an added level of safety to our facilities. It continues to maintain our GISA profile. As mentioned before, Reynolds did all the retrofits in all the GISA buildings. It only makes sense to have a contractor, in my opinion, that already knows the systems to be updating the systems. I feel this is the most expedient way to deal with the environmental needs, to give our public an added level of security to know that we're doing everything humanly possible to make sure the environment inside the schools is going to be as protective as we can make it within, you know, financial reason. So, beyond that, I want to thank you, Mr. Spar, for clarifying those questions before I take a vote. Any more questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. I wouldn't go too far. Just take one of those open seats there. We got to read the other motion in case there's more questions. Behind you is an open seat. Mr. Allen, please.
Okay. Item 213 Appointment of Contractor for GISA Indoor Air Quality Towanka Elementary School. Whereas, the Nishamani Board of School Directors desires to move forward with a Guaranteed Energy Services Project to address indoor air quality improvements utilizing bipolar ionization and/or ultraviolet germicidal irradiation for its facilities at Towanka Elementary School at 2055 Brownsville Road, Langhorne, PA 19053, and potentially for any other noneducational buildings. And whereas, the Nishamani Board of School Directors approves the appointment of Reynolds Energy Services, Inc. to provide all the necessary services including construction upgrades related to energy efficiency measures for the project. And whereas, the Board of School Directors approves Reynolds Energy Services, Inc. to begin an investment-grade audit for this Guaranteed Energy Services Agreement as directed by the Administration and Board for the project. And whereas, the project will be provided as recommended in the presentation to the Board on July 28th, 2020, and in accordance with the scope authorized by the Board following the presentation, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of School Directors accepts the proposal and appoints Reynolds Energy Services, Inc. as a qualified energy service provider under Pennsylvania Act 39, 57, and 77 Guidelines, subject to estimated costs of improvements for the project in an amount acceptable to the district.
A motion's been made for item 2.13. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. I would ask Mr. Spar to approach the podium again. We've received some interest in the process here that we're proceeding through with Towanka, so if you could just lead us through it for clarification.
Certainly. So, when we started the GISA process in 2015, we did not have a Towanka Elementary School. And as a result, the list of buildings that was advertised in the original request for proposals and the subsequent agreement that was made between the Nishamani and Reynolds Energy Services did not include Towanka. Law requires that those buildings in that advertisement and in the RFP and in the agreement must be consistent. Otherwise, you really have to add a building to that list. The only way to add a building to that list in the estimation of both your council and our firm is that you have to go out and request proposals again. So, that has occurred. We have responded to that. We have looked at Towanka so that if you ask us to be back here at your next board meeting, we will be able to move forward with Towanka on the heels of all the other buildings and really make it occur in the same timeframe. So, we've done our homework for that in the event that you selected us to do that and ask us to do what you're talking about voting on right now.
Thank you. And Mr. Irwin, the district has done its due diligence concerning this resolution?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any additional questions on item 2.13? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Thank you, Mr. Spar. Mr. Kovitz, can you please read 2.14?
Yep. I'd like to make a motion to approve 2.14 Nishamani Kids Club Agreement. Whereas, the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the TLC Lease Agreement with Nishamani Kids Club for the 2020-2021 school year. Whereas, the Nishamani Board of School Directors approves the use of five additional classrooms at Nishamani High School for a rental fee of $1. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the lease agreement with Nishamani Kids Club.
Thank you, Mr. Kovitz. A motion on 2.14 has been made. May I have a second? Second by Mrs. Hollenbach. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Mrs. Bowman, please.
I'd like to make a motion 2.15 Federal Grant E-Grant Authorization. Be it resolved by authority of the Nishamani School Board, School Directors of the Nishamani School District, and it is hereby resolved by authority of the same that Dr. Robert McGee, M. McGee III, who is Superintendent of the above-named body, is authorized and directed to sign any and all contract agreements, grants and/or licenses here and after collectively referred to as contracts with the Pennsylvania referred to as contracts with the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And be it further resolved that the body consents to the use of electronic signatures by the above-named individual and that no handwritten signature from the above-named individual shall be required in order for any contract with the department to be legally enforceable and that by affixing his or her electronic signature to the electronic file of the contract via department's e-grant system, the above-designated authorized individual shall be effectively executed and delivered the contract, binding the Nishamani School, the Nishamani Board of School Directors to comply with the terms of said contract. And be it further resolved that no writing shall be required in order to make the contract valid and legally binding, provided that the department and all other necessary Commonwealth approvers affix their signatures electronically and an electronically printed copy of the contract is emailed or is otherwise made available to the body by electronic means. And be it further resolved that the body will not contest to the due authorization, execution, delivery, validity, and enforceability of the electronic contract under the provisions of the Statute of Frauds and any other applicable law. The contract, if introduced as evidence on paper in any judicial arbitration, mediation, or administrative proceedings, will be admissible as between the parties to the same extent and under the same conditions as other business records originated and maintained in the documentary form, and the admissibility thereof shall be contested under either the business records exception to the hearsay rule or best evidence rule. Be it further resolved that the body will notify the department's Bureau of Management Services promptly in the event that the above-named individual is no longer authorized to execute agreements on behalf of the body electronically. And the department shall be entitled to rely upon the above-named officer's authority to execute agreements electronically on the behalf of the body until such notice is received by the department's Office of Chief Counsel.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. A motion's been made on 2.15. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. Any comments, questions, or concerns? I'm almost afraid to ask that question on this item, but... Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. Congratulations, Dr. McGee.
I will press submit, Mr. Parentana.
Items for approval at the public, next public meeting. Items 3.01, reopening of school, month of October. 3.02, approval of bids. And that is it. Moving on to committee reports. Business operations, Mrs. Hollenbach.
Our next business operations meeting is September 15. It will be in the boardroom where they typically are at 6:30. It will be live, so if anybody would like to come out and join us, please do so. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand, Mrs. Boyle, we've postponed the ed development meeting? Yes, we have. Facilities and planning, Mr. Sullivan.
We have our first meeting of the school year next Wednesday, September 16, at 6:30 at Fertivar in the library.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mrs. Boyle, policy, please.
The next policy committee will be in October, October 29, 6:30. All are welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Boyle. Representative reports, IU Board, Mr. Cirillo.
Bucks County IU, because they provide a lot of services that require them to be a lot less than six foot apart from the students that require their services, Dr. Hoffman and his team have been working with the Pennsylvania Board of Education, the Department of Health, along with the Bucks County Department of Health, to ensure proper support and services are being safely provided to the students in need. They are working diligently to make sure that, rest assured, everyone who is entitled and has need for their services will be done in a very safe fashion. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. Nishamani Education Foundation, Mrs. Bowman.
Hi, good evening. The NEF met on August 10, and the following was discussed. The Alumni Achievement Awards will be contacted to accept their recognition with a possible social media live ceremony. We will have information regarding that at a later date. The Wizards event is tentatively rescheduled to September, or I'm sorry, Saturday, April 17, 2021. And the Nishamani Education Foundation is currently not accepting teacher grants, but will instead contribute money to schools for COVID-19-related educational needs of students. And we will be holding our next meeting on September 14.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Mr. Allen, Technical School.
Mr. Veritano, the Bucks County Technical High School Joint Board met August 24, 7:30, via Zoom, in which we approved the health and safety protocol plan that was submitted and approved the start of the school year, which was Wednesday, September 2, grades nine through 12 reported for a half-day virtually. Grades 10 through 12 showed up Thursday on September 3. And today, Tuesday, September 8, all students began their full-day remote virtual learning. The next meeting of the board will be September 29 at 7:30, and we hope at that time to make a decision as to if we can begin the hybrid model, which if all goes well, and we are hopeful that will begin Tuesday, October 13. I don't want to go into too much detail about what those schedules are like, as I'm sure people will be tuning in, and I don't want to confuse the issue with what we are doing in the district. But if you want to know, they are posted on the Bucks County Technical High School's website and their Facebook page. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. PSBA liaison is me. It's all COVID all the time right now. I don't think I want to bore the public with any more information regarding how we're mitigating the pandemic, so I will just leave it at that. There's nothing else to report from the PSBA. That will bring us to our... Oh, excuse me, we have one other item of business. I would like to make a motion for the Nishamani School Board of Directors to move the 9/22/2020 school board meeting to 9/30/2020, which is a Wednesday. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bowman. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Dr. McGee, could you just provide some commentary for the public?
Sure. The original date of September 22 puts us in the middle of our student orientations. And one of the primary goals of that last meeting in September of the school board is to determine whether we're ready to start the blue-red hybrid model in October. So that early meeting leaves us four and a half grades without having actually come into school. So this extra week buys us time to get more kids into school, make sure we refine our practices, and gives us another week to find missing staff and make sure those materials are in place.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes nine to zero. That will bring us to our second public comment period. We will call speakers to the podium by recognition. When you come to the podium, you have three minutes. You state your name, your occupation, the area in which you live, and please no personal attacks. Does anyone want to be recognized for public comment?
I have a list here.
You have a list?
Yes. Jonathan Lopez.
Okay. Jonathan, approach the podium, please. Jonathan, when you say your name, do me a favor, spell your last name for the secretary so she can put it in the minutes.
Okay. My name is Jonathan Lopez, O-O-P-E-Z.
Area you live in, your occupation?
I live in Langhorne, Pennsylvania, and I attend the Nishamani High School. I would like to, and you know, I am the student body president of the class of 2023, and I wanted to discuss about the name Redskins and how I was using the mask on, how to represent it. And to start off, I want to say by, I want to read out the statements from students, and the first one says, "I hope it still counts because I know I'm a bit whitewashed in my culture because of colonization, but I know that I am a native indigenous person from Central America. It makes me sad and disappointing that even one person was offended by this slur and it should have been taken down from the first complaint. I don't know when was the last time they asked someone if they were affected by this word, as if it has to do with their culture. But I'm saying this right now, in 2020, as a student, I am disgusted by the use of that word and that they use an excuse such as, no one is offended, and that they are honoring the history. I've taken history in the Nishamani High School, Carl Samber Middle School, and Albert Swisher Elementary School, and they have done a poor job of teaching about Native history and/or talk about the past and current problems. This needs to be taken down because it goes against their previous statement that the Nishamani honors diversity more like they exploit cultures for their use and then about, then don't educate their students about the culture." Another statement says, "I felt like it's undereducated to spend half a million dollars on a school name that puts Native American people down and also offends them. It's selfish to keep a name because it's tradition rather than realize how it makes Native Americans feel. Half a million dollars could be used to put education in new uniforms and equipment, but instead it is used to support racism." Another statement says, "The team name is a filthy reminder of how my ancestors were treated and how my mother's great-grandparents were treated. My mother's great-grandma was named Eto. She was a Native Indian and owned many acres of land in central Pennsylvania. Several decades ago, she married an English white man. Once they were married, Eto was raped and sold off her land to the highest bidder. That is what Redskins mean to me." Change, change is one of these statements have, that all of these statements have in common. We as humans believe that act of change is a bad thing because of getting out of comfort zone or looking to a new direction. We never open our eyes to. One of the biggest things a person could do is listen. Listen to someone else's point of view, not matter if they have a different background, if they don't have the same religion or have the same problems as you. But sitting down, listening to them, and putting them in your shoes and putting yourself in their shoes is a big difference. Look at the way they think and act yourself. Do they have a point? Once we understand change is something we need in order to grow and overall become a better person than we were yesterday, we won't ever do better. I believe in change. It changed through our mascot and how we represent it. If we open our eyes to change, then we could see that this slur needs to be taken off." Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Nicholas Manatiro.
I'm a student in the Nishamani High School, and I live in Langhorne.
Want to spell your last name, please?
Well, I'm here to talk about the school's team name, the Redskins. In 2012, a Native American woman by the name Madonna Fanboyle complained countless times to the school board and superintendent that the school's team name was offensive to Native Americans and provided research that proved it had a negative impact on the mental health of Native American students. This name has a clear psychological impact on Native American students. As one student had to take on a work release program due to the racism he was experiencing in school. This student's mother reported that he was anxious and his self-esteem was being affected. This student was also known to leave school several times. This shows me that this school board does not care about the well-being of Native American students. This shows me that you only care about the needs of the majority, not the minority. Native Americans have the highest dropout rate and the lowest graduation rates, and it's because of school boards like this one that blatantly ignore these problems. The allowed use of this name also perpetuates racial stereotyping towards Native American students, as the environment it creates allows students to believe stereotyping Native Americans is okay. I speak from firsthand experience attending football games here at the Nishamani High School, seeing students wearing fake Native American headdresses with red-painted faces. Putting on red paint, a fake headdress, and making boisterous noise isn't any different than putting on black paint and acting out stereotypes of Black Americans. Same game, just different community. People watch older movies with blackface, and they might be appalled or uncomfortable seeing how the public was so vocal acting out their prejudice towards Black Americans, but then they don't see the correlation of playing Indians today. This being said, this school board is leading a terrible example for its students and is going against one of education's highest goals, which is to teach history, not reinforce stereotypes of any people. This school district also claims that they believe they are doing an honorable thing by choosing to defend this name for the natives that once lived here, yet they continue to use inaccurate depictions of the people that once called these lands home. The Lenins and Nape were not known to wear the garb depicted by the artwork used to represent them found around the Nishamani High School. To me, this shows that this is never about upholding history, but the school board's way of making an eight-year-long fight makes sense. All this team name does is cause conflict in our schools and creates unhealthy environments for Native American students, so why spend $400,000 defending it? What concerns me the most as a student of the Nishamani is the way this school board has seen no problem with this situation over the past eight years. You've had eight years to educate yourselves on this subject, and here we are yet again, a new generation of students protesting the same name. When will you realize enough is enough? There is currently petition out right now to get this name changed with over 40,000 signatures from across the country. This school board has said it themselves that this will be a public decision, and clearly public has spoken, and we no longer want this egregious name to represent us or our community. Thank you for your time.
Azelia Miles?
Thank you, Nicholas.
I thought I had to, like, say my name or something.
Say your name.
Your students base... Oh, Azelia Miles. I'm a student at the Nishamani High...
Say your name.
Oh, Langhorne, sorry. First of all, I don't understand why we're allowed to have the team name Redskins and mock Native American culture at school events when nobody at this place even knows any Native American history. Also, Redskin is a dictionary-defined slur. In the case filed by the PHRC, the district admitted to knowing that it was a slur, but said it was acceptable because they didn't mean it in that way. But what makes you guys think that you can decide what indigenous people should and shouldn't be offended by, or that you can just change the definition of a slur? There are also studies proving that most practicing indigenous people are offended by the name, including indigenous students at the Nishamani High I've spoken to. The name also violates Policy 547, which says that Nishamani prohibits discrimination. And the first bullet on the list of what Nishamani considers impermissible discrimination includes slurs. So why is this even up for debate? The name blatantly violates the policy. Also, the district released a statement saying that whether the name would get changed or not would be a community decision, but I feel like that's a blatant lie. You guys aren't listening to the community at all. I know that the superintendent ignored a bunch of emails about this matter. You could also tell that he didn't read a lot of the ones that he did respond to because the response was copied and pasted and didn't even answer or address all of the points in the students' emails. Also, I'm confused on how this could be a community decision when in 2014, the school board edited Policy 600 specifically to make it against the rules for authors of the school newspaper to criticize the team name or tell it, or tell people the real meaning of the name, a slur against Native Americans. And if it weren't for NBC Philadelphia making a report about this situation, you guys would have never even told the Nishamani community about the controversy. You kept it from us until we found out about it on our own. Then when we did find out about it, you guys ignored us. Not only am I requesting for you guys to change the name, but once it is changed, you guys should include Native American history in the curriculum to erase the misconceptions about indigenous people that you've already poisoned students' minds with. It's also very unsettling how you guys appear to be all-white school board and deciding what people of color shouldn't be offended by. It's also worth noting and very convenient that the president of the school board made public posts on his Facebook saying that white privilege isn't real. public posts on his Facebook saying that white privilege isn't real and criticized Black Lives Matter by calling its demonstrators animals and thugs. And I know he might say that he was criticizing the organization and not the movement, but it's clear that he doesn't support either, because he made several posts criticizing the movement and zero that were anti-racist, anti-police brutality, or showing any empathy at all towards victims. I don't think this man believes that Black or Indigenous lives matter and therefore is unfit to make unbiased decisions for students. In an email on July 1st, Superintendent Rob McGee discussed the importance of being anti-racist, while I don't think that will ever happen with the school board and school board president like this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? There's no other sign-ups? Does anybody else have any business they wish to approach the podium with? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Future topics. Does anybody have any future topics? I do have a future topic that I want to bring up. This period of time since the pandemic has started has had the school board wrestle with some policy issues related to how we meet, remote public speaking, a host of issues that Mr. Torrente and I have been talking a little bit about back and forth. So I feel that we probably need to relook at some of those policies, and I'll have the board solicitor contact Mrs. Boyle and our policy liaison about possibly opening a couple of them up and trying to adapt them to make sure they cover possibilities like we've been through through the last couple months here. Other than that, it's going to bring us to board comment. I just want to make note to our board members that the solicitor has advised me that the issue of the PHRC and Redskins is still under litigation, and the board solicitor recommends to do not discuss those issues. We're going to open up board comment to Mrs. Bowman. Do you have any board comment?
I do. I would like to go back. Andrea Hess is retiring from our district. She's put in 33 years. I believe she's been in multiple elementary schools, including the old Lower South Hampton Elementary, which is how I know her. She's very dear to my family, wonderful educator, and I would like to congratulate her on 33 years and her retirement. So, congratulations, Mrs. Hess.
Thank you. Mrs. Boyle?
No, no, your comment is...
Thank you. Mrs. Hollenbach?
I just wanted to welcome all of the students back today. From my understanding, for the most part, it was very good, and they were all anxious to come back and start learning again, and they can't wait to be back in person.
Thank you. Mr. Kovitz, please.
Yeah, in the past several months, we've been thanking Dr. McGee and the administration that have worked really hard to get the school year off to as best a start as they can. But considering as today is the first day of school for many, I wanted to thank the...I wanted to thank not just the students, but the teachers as well. First, the students. It is a crazy time, and I don't think anyone sitting here on the board should...I think everyone here on the board would agree that we've never lived through anything like this before. We hope to never do that again, but yet somehow our students have to face it this year. They won't be facing it alone. There is the administration and us on the board behind that, and of course, our teachers as well. As an educator myself, I know what I have to go through on a daily basis to ensure that my students are being given the best education that I can possibly give them. I know the Herculean task that's ahead, and I just wanted to thank again those two very important communities for without which we would not be here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kovitz. Mr. Marriington?
Yeah, it also goes without saying, I also applaud the teachers. I've spoken with a number of them, spoken to a number of them about the difficulties and the unpredictability of this start of a school year. And as far as I can see, I think a few hitches, but for the most part, people have pulled together, and we're going to make this thing work. I also want to bring up the Shamani Kids Club, who has helped out a lot of working parents in this situation. I believe we have 86 students, you know, who were...both parents work. These kids now have a place to spend the day, and, you know, I think they're doing an exemplary job as well. And this was, you know, at their impetus, they came up with this plan and got some classroom space from the district, and I think it's a great idea, so...excuse me? It's a shame we don't have more space. Yeah, it would be nice if we did, but 86 isn't bad. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Marriington. Mr. Cirillo, please.
I just want to commend the three students who just spoke, Jonathan, Nicholas, and Azalia. I think it was very admirable that you have such strong feelings and convictions and that you chose to express them to the board this evening. Continued success in terms of what you desire and what you want. I appreciate what you did this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cirillo. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, I'd like to just welcome everyone back to a school year that's going to be like none other, and I would also like to congratulate Mr. Hunt on his appointment as the acting principal at Pocwessin. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, one of these meetings, I'm going to get this right, it is the customary policy of the board, is to have our superintendent to be the first speaker of public comment, yet I consistently forget him. I'm sorry. Go right ahead, Dr. McGee.
That's okay, Mr. Parentano. I'd just like to echo some of the thoughts of the board, and I think we accidentally used the term "teachers" to include everybody in an educational organization, administrators, custodians, instructional aid staff, support staff, bus drivers. So those 1,100 people that came back to work last Monday really have been pulling in the same direction. They've all stepped up, and it's been impressive to watch. So, yes, thank you, and we're going to keep doing it, and if it is possible, we are going to open schools. So I think we have the right team in place. We're all pulling in the same direction. So on behalf of the staff, thank you, and I'd like to thank them, from administrators to whatever role you serve within the organization. They all are incredibly important and even more so important when health and safety's involved. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Allen?
Yes, just a few words. I want to welcome everyone back. Certainly not the school year beginning we're used to, but...and one that we won't soon forget, but I, again, welcome everyone back and the students. I saw, you know, today several photos, sitting together in your workstations or sitting at your workstations, beginning your virtual learning. And I echo the superintendent's thoughts that we're anxious to get you back into our buildings as soon as we can as well, but I'm just happy that we're able to provide this for you and launch the school year and that the efforts of everyone involved, including your parents, to pull that off is fantastic. We're in Shamani, we'll get through this. I also want to echo the thoughts of commending our students who came forward and spoke tonight. While we can't talk to the...speak to the contents of what you brought to the table, we're very proud of you that you came and spoke. That's important. It's scary. It's hard to come before the public and speak. I'm very proud of the fact that we're Shamani students who are comfortable enough and poised enough to do that. Thank you. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. I'll try and finish up quickly. Welcome back, everybody. I know it's not the beginning of the school year that everybody want it, but we're doing our best to get there, as Dr. McGee has mentioned. It was his concept to postpone the board meeting another week to give us the amount of time that we need to consider all factors for October 5th. There will be a vote, one way or the other, depending upon the three criterias that we laid out at the prior meetings, which were our equipment needed to meet our health and safety plan, our staffing needed to meet our health and safety plan, and the statistical analysis from the Bucks County Board of Health. See, I got them right.
You did.
And will allow us to decide whether or not we'll be able to bring back into a hybrid model on October 5th. And I want to thank Dr. McGee for making that suggestion. It was an excellent suggestion. Mr. Marriington mentioned Kids Club. If we would have had more room for them, they would be helping more parents. We only had those five classrooms available in that one area for them. They're making the best use out of them. Kids Club, for years, has contributed tens of thousands of dollars back to the Shamani School District through their services, whether it's been upgrading playgrounds, buying equipments for gymnasiums. They've been an excellent partner for Shamani, and we were very, very eager to help them in any endeavor that they were trying to do to help our Shamani parents. As Mr. Allen, Mr. Cirillo mentioned to our three speakers, you did an excellent job. I want to thank you for your convictions to come out and speak in public. It's not easy to do, as Mr. Allen mentioned, and it's important that, you know, you bring your issues to us. Some of your commentary is the board doesn't listen or the board doesn't care, and I want you to understand that the board listens and cares about all the issues that come in front of it. It doesn't matter what our personal...how would you say that properly? Our personal position would be on such an issue. You bring an issue of concern, and the school board weighs it in the global aspect of the entire district. And then we make decisions appropriately. The reason we can't talk about that issue in specifics is because it's in litigation. Will there ever become a time when the school...the board will have a direct conversation with the public? That time will come. Whether this board is empaneled at that time or not, I don't know. It may be a different board, but I would believe that that's probably not going to occur until the litigation part of the issue is over. As far as what students are free and free not to do, no student is barred from criticizing anyone in a...in the school newspaper. No student ever was. The purpose of Policy 600 was simply to make sure all students, in accordance with state and federal law, have the same access to the school paper as everyone else. So while one student may have an opinion on one item and another student has an opinion on another item, it is not for the editors to alter the words of that student that may disagree with their point of view. No editor is ever prohibited from writing or not writing a word that they don't want to write. So there needs to be some clarification, and the policy states it pretty well. And that in a situation where an arbiter needs to make the final decision, the high school principal is the executive editor of the newspaper, and that authority is with the high school principal to decide if those issues cannot be solved within the format of how the school paper is set up to run. So I just want to make sure you're clear on that, because you stated otherwise. Dr. McGee, you know, remembers when, you know, they published such a not-flattering character of him, which was a criticism. And that criticism is allowed to occur, as long as it's not done in a profane way and it meets the standards laid out in the state code that governs how those school papers work. So, you know, whether or not you feel your position's right, or another person's position is right, or you don't agree with their position, the fact of the matter is, is every student is entitled to their protections under the First Amendment. And that goes both ways. It's not a one-way street. So I appreciate the fact that you brought your concerns. We do listen to them. We do care about them. But if you're under that impression about how the school paper is run, you're misinformed. And if you read the policy specifically, it tells you about the different students that have different opportunities when there is a contention about what's being printed. Other than that, I want to thank everyone for coming out. Hopefully, we'll get back to the day where more people feel free to participate in the meetings and be safe, and let's have a great opening tomorrow for our school day. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.